Good evening, everyone. We're calling the City Council Special Session Meeting in order for Wednesday, April 22, 2020, obviously a little after 6:30 PM. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Rallo.
Here.
Scambaluri.
Here.
Rosenbarger.
Here.
Thank you. Sims.
Here.
Piedmont Smith.
Here.
Flaherty.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
And Sandberg.
Here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. Probably do things just a tad different today, a little bit of housekeeping. The first thing I'd like to do before we do Agenda summation is make this announcement as the Presiding Officer and performing this duty under Bloomington Municipal Code 2-04, I'm sorry, 2 dot 04 dot 270 to approve meeting agendas. The Council President and me in his absence as Council Vice President has determined that the items on tonight's agenda are essential matters critical to the operation of city government. Now, as far as other reminders for the public, members of the public on this virtual meeting, you will have both audio and video disabled until public comment, which will proceed as follows. Members of the public wishing to speak during public comment should use either the raised hand feature, I believe that's at the bottom of the Zoom screen, or should indicate their desire to comment using the chat function. When a member of the public is called upon to speak, council staff will enable audio and video during that individual's comment, then disable both when the comment is over. The Presiding Officer will chair the meeting, will call on people to speak, just like at normal meetings, when someone wishes to speak, you should physically raise your hand, these are my colleagues and city staff, raise your hand and wait for the chair to acknowledge you. Thank you all. Now, today's Agenda summation. We will have reports from council members, number two, from the mayor and city offices, number three, from council committees. Then we will have, I'm sorry, am I forgetting the boards and commissions appointments?
Yes.
Okay. And we'll also have appointments to boards and commissions. Our legislative for second reading and resolutions will be ordinance 20 dash 09, which is to amend Title II of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Administration and Personnel to Grant Authority to Act in accordance with declared disaster emergencies regarding amending 2 point 22 point 030 entitled Employee Policies and complying with the State of Indiana's Declaration of Disaster Emergency under ICE, I believe that's Indiana Code, 10 dash 14 dash 3 dash 12. The Committee of the Whole Recommendation for this ordinance was due pass 900. There are no legislations for first reading this evening. Then we'll have a discussion on council schedule and after which we will be prepared to adjourn. So, council comments. Try to go down the road here. Councilmember Sandberg.
No report.
Councilmember Scambaluri. I'm sorry, she's booted. No report.
No report, thank you.
Thank you, you're fine. Councilmember Rallo.
I'll make a quick report, just to say I've been reflecting because this is Earth Day. And of course, we're still in the early stages of this pandemic. And I think if there's one thing that we could learn from this pandemic is that one of the intrinsic nature of the pandemic is its exponential growth. And I think more and more people who were unfamiliar with the idea of exponential growth are learning about it and learning how quickly that growth can overtake you. And so you see a case here and a case there and then a cluster and then you're in a boom stage where you're headed up that hockey stick of exponential growth. And this being Earth Day, I think there's a point to tie in and that is that this, the root of our unsustainable way of living, that is expecting infinite growth on a finite planet, is, has reached exponential proportions and it's been there for some time. And it's really at the root of our problems. Climate change, species extinction, the ocean crisis and all of that is really an impact, a manifestation of the impact of this idea that we can grow forever on a, on a, on a sphere, which is finite by definition. And so there might be an opportunity for people to recognize that. And I think there's also going to be an opportunity for people to question the basis by which we have an economy that is so fragile that an interruption that's only taken a few weeks requires tens of trillions of dollars of inputs just to keep the economy growing because we have such a huge over-leveraged debt load. And that's not a way to live on a finite planet. It's inevitable that we would reach limits. And I think that this bubble that we've been living in has found a pin and that pin has been the virus. So if there's something to take away today on Earth Day, it is that we need a different way of having an economy run that serves people's interests, doesn't just serve financial interests of speculation, doesn't continue this gigantic wealth gap that we've experienced that would continues to grow and that lives in a sustainable way that is in some steady state within the limits of planet Earth. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
I have no report.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, I want to thank my colleague, Councilmember Rallo, for his remarks concerning Earth Day. The idea of a steady state economy has been around for a long time, but I think that every disaster, be it a pandemic or an ecological disaster that we, we see, just brings that point home, all the more that we have limited resources and we've been living far in excess of what those resources can be, can provide for decades. So this is the 50th anniversary of Earth Day. 1970 was the first Earth Day celebration which brought together environmental activists that had been concentrating on, on events, really, oil spills, fires, pollution, rivers catching on fire on, in Cleveland, for example, that were rallying around specific environmental disasters and catastrophes. And this Earth Day event really brought them together and made the whole movement political. And I think that at the time, global climate change was not really on their radar. We have come a long way as far as pollution, but a more existential threat is global climate change, which has, I think, you know, gotten out of the headlines. I mean, the only headlines we see these days are about COVID-19. But we mustn't forget that climate change continues. Scientists predict this year will be the hottest on record. And these, these problems are not going away even as we all stop driving and just work from home. I think that many activists are calling on COVID-19 and the, the changes that people have undergone, gone in their personal lives as, and, and the massive changes of the economy as an opportunity. Not that there are good things, I mean, I know that, that most people are suffering in one way or another, but an opportunity to rethink our economy and our habits and hopefully approach these things in a new way, approach life in our society, especially in the, in our, in the United States and in our rich country in a new way to say, you know, when we get back to normal, it shouldn't be normal. It shouldn't be going back to driving everywhere, to going shopping just for the sake of buying stuff we don't need. We need to reevaluate both our economy and our ecological footprint. And this crisis, which is terrible, but it gives us an opportunity to do that. So I, I hope that we will as a society. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, I have a brief follow-up on Earth Day as well, wishing everyone a happy Earth Day here on the 50th anniversary. And it is an odd one where we can't gather together and celebrate and take actions. Similarly, I've been reflecting on, you know, what is the defining crisis of, of really humankind, the climate crisis and our current pandemic health crisis, COVID-19. And really, what I, what's, what struck me most about how they're similar is that it's the vulnerable people in our society that are, that are most affected and first affected. So of course, in the context of, of COVID-19, that has been elderly people, people with underlying respiratory conditions, which actually does have climate dimensions because people who live near polluting facilities, who live near highways, most often people of color, indigenous communities are affected by our choices in the context of global climate change. And they're the people most vulnerable to this COVID, the coronavirus, as well as increases in heat that we are seeing here in Bloomington and around the country and around the world. So these are really centrally issues of justice. And I would invite everyone to go back or to go and listen to Senator Gaylord Nelson's remarks that he made 50 years ago today in Don Meadow kicking off the inaugural Earth Day. Those can be found if you just Google IU unearth. The IU Student Government and Residence Hall Association put out a speaker series today, a series of videos. And that includes also a link to Senator Gaylord Nelson's remarks. They're incredibly on point still 50 years later. We have made a lot of progress on air and water quality, but of course, the looming threat of climate change has become ever worse. And again, I, I was struck also by Senator Gaylord's really forward-thinking view of justice. He understood quite well that if people are going hungry and without shelter, that we've won nothing at all in the context of the environmental movement. So, and the other thing that he really emphasized that struck me is, is that it, and he was unequivocal about this, that while the federal government certainly had a responsibility to play, so too did state government, counties, cities, towns, individuals. This is an everyone, everywhere problem. And just like the collective action and solidarity that's been needed to deal with the COVID-19 pandemic, we really need to, as we move forward, move past this, like my colleagues have said, not go back to business as usual, you know, try to continue to make progress on, on this really, really big looming problem, as we've seen with COVID-19. Preparation and, and taking care of things on the front end is far, far better than, than waiting for the crisis to emerge and trying to respond. So that's it. A lot of, yeah, interesting parallels, I think, between what's happening in these strange times we're in and with, with the climate crisis. So I wanted to share that reflection. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Hi, thanks. I have a comment as well tonight. So I, I emailed the administration today and really have been thinking about what we should be doing here in Bloomington for folks during this period. And I know a lot of bigger cities around the country and around the world are doing things like closing streets and closing lanes to vehicles to give folks more space to physical distance while we're under these orders, that people still want to get out and about. So I just want to put it on our radar and everyone's radar that this is a good time to close down some roads or close some lanes on one-way roads so that we can get folks off the sidewalks. I mean, a lot of times our sidewalks aren't really wide enough to get folks six feet from each other. And if we take lanes, you know, we'll have another 20 feet or so that folks can get out. So I don't say this as well as other websites, so I wanted just to read a little bit from the Rails to Trails website that speaks to this and, and some ideas that could, we could do here in Bloomington to give people better options for getting outside safely. So as we all know, Americans are hunkering down in efforts to slow the spread of COVID-19. At least 261 million Americans are on orders to shelter in place or stay at home. And under much of this local guidance, there includes outdoor exercise as essential and many public health experts are reinforcing the importance of being physically active. It's vital to our wellness and boosting our immunity as long as we maintain a safe social distance or physical distance of at least six feet between people. Nationwide, trail use is up nearly 200%, making it increasingly difficult for people to keep six feet of space between each other and forcing trail managers and local officials to take action quickly for guidelines at parks and trails. So that's mostly about parks and trails. One thing that is clear is that every American needs safe immediate access to the outdoors, trails in every neighborhood right now. And our, our local elected officials have the power to make this happen. So many communities don't have outdoor facilities equipped to handle the surge in use, especially trails and parks. And I know here in Bloomington, we are having a hard time with the beeline being incredibly crowded, even I, I'm out there sometimes at seven in the morning and it's hard to keep space between me and others. But, so this is a result, right, of fewer people traveling to work. And it's not only that, people are staying home, but our vehicles are staying home too. So while car traffic has significantly decreased in many towns, we're seeing a big increase in the amount of folks who are out and about. Of course, it's true that we don't have students here right now for the most part. So we have a lot fewer cars on the road. And while we may have fewer people on sidewalks, because we have to keep this distance where we're normally one foot between each other and now we're six feet, it's like we are, we just have a lot more people actually because we need that extra space. So I think it's a great idea for us and the city to look at possible ideas to create an integrated closure of streets so folks can more easily get to our grocery stores via bike and on foot and can get through different neighborhoods, a really good connected route of closed streets. So this could look like something, you know, where we have residential, a residential street in every neighborhood that becomes a pedestrian boulevard and it's only open to through traffic. So that might be something like West Fourth here in Prospect Hill or University or in Elm Heights or Grant Street in Bryant Park, just some ideas, just streets that you got a lot of people living there and then the whole neighborhood could use it as a space, as space to physically distance safely while they're outside. We could also look at closing some parking lanes. So Sixth Street and Fourth Street downtown both have parking on both sides of them. And right now, of course, there aren't a lot of cars parked downtown. So limiting parking to one side of the street and then using the other side to extend a sidewalk could be a creative idea. Other cities are also doing, are decreasing residential street speed limits to 15 miles per hour so that we don't have folks speeding in places where people might be outside. I think that, you know, as this goes on and on, we might just want to look at getting creative and really getting more space out there for people on bikes and, and walking. So I wanted to just bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will make a comment before we move on with the agenda and I'll be as brief as possible. One of the things that, and many of the relationships that I build with other people is that I think it's valuable to share each other's lived experiences, how it affects your life. Years and years ago, my dear grandmother, who raised us, used to say some things that didn't make, at the time, tons of sense. But as you grow older, they do. One of the things that she used to say was, is that when America gets a cold, people like us get pneumonia. Now, later on in life, I found out that people like us meant black people and minority people here in America. I say all that to say this, this pandemic and any other social emergencies, as we have seen and it's evidenced, tends to put a spotlight on the social disparities that we go through in this country. As you can see through the disparate effects that has been brought on by COVID-19, it has disparately affected people in poverty or near poverty, black and brown people and other racial minorities, other minor, or marginalized populations. A lot of this is due to what I believe is systemic institutionalized racist practices that has manifested itself into lack of medical, medical access for some of these populations. It has created the system food deserts in many of our urban areas and landscapes. It has also, as we can see, created some transportation issues, in particularly folks who are dependent on public transportation. So as we come out the other side of this pandemic, I think there's going to be a lot of lessons that everyone learned. And I just want to make sure that that is also one of the things that we think about and learn with regard to how we treat each other socially, how the system in which we operate treats other folks and that maybe we can improve and become a better society as we move forward. So, thank you. I believe the next agenda item is update on the city's response to the COVID-19 public health emergency from the mayor and city offices, but there's only one report tonight and I see Mayor John Hamilton is present. Mayor, you're on.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you again, Councilmember Sims and all of you for welcoming me and thanks to the public, all of you are paying attention. I appreciate being with you again. I want to give a couple of updates tonight. I first want to start just mentioning Dawn Johnson, who you all know has been in the hospital. She is now home, which is a delight and we're very relieved for that. She spent 10, 10 nights in Bloomington Hospital. And I actually want to, just on part of my report, actually share a statement from her to the community as part of the mayor's report. And I'll just read that and then I'll finish my report with a couple of other comments. But this is from Dawn. "I want to say thank you to the Bloomington community for the encouragement and love expressed to me and our family during the 10 nights I struggled with COVID-19 at Bloomington Hospital. My brother also was hospitalized in Indianapolis during that same time and now is recovering at home in Kokomo. But my 79-year-old mother was not able to win her battle with COVID and we lost her last Thursday. In addition to saying thank you for the support, I would like to share a few thoughts from that difficult experience. My brother and I and countless others would not be alive today if it were not for the willingness of nurses, doctors and other healthcare providers to risk their health and very lives. I was painfully conscious and deeply grateful for their sacrifice each time they put on protective gear to enter my isolation room to care for me, including days I struggled mightily to breathe. I understand more profoundly than before that if we do not take seriously the threat of COVID and physically distance and follow sensible public guidelines, we endanger the lives of these dedicated frontline workers as well as their children, grandchildren and parents who share their homes. It is our moral obligation. I also want to say that it is terribly dangerous and an outrage that President Trump and others are encouraging insane theories that COVID is somehow a hoax or that certain local and state governments are implicated somehow. COVID has already killed my mother and 175,000 or so others. Our success at overcoming this health emergency and global pandemic depends on us sticking together, following health experts and science and not allowing cynical political ploys or games to divert us from our duties. Thank you again to the whole community and let's stay the course together." That's from Dawn Johnson and I appreciate you letting me share that and for all the support we've gotten. It is true that healthcare worker saved her life at a risk of their own families. And I just do, I do want to repeat, the continued physical distancing is key. It is outrageous that some leaders, including our president, are calling for protests against civic authorities and rebellions against stay-at-home orders and such. That's a dangerous, deadly and despicable game. And I want to report that we are unified here in Bloomington and I appreciate that from the leadership to support the continued listening to health experts and doing the right thing with the physical distancing. I'll just briefly report as well, and I do want to thank the city and the members of our community for continuing to adopt and embrace the protections that are so important. We continue to work, the continuity of city government meets weekly and, as you know, we're continuing to provide services. I'll thank again all of our employees who work for us, making services continue. The UDO, Unified Development Ordinance, has been approved and signed. We're continuing work, switchyard apartments, new, eight new affordable apartment units opened with a virtual ribbon cutting last week at the new park. Farmer's Market continues, nearly 500 patrons were accommodated efficiently. You see progress on Kirkwood Construction and many other projects that are going on. There are some events being canceled. Beetown Boom has been canceled. Taste of Bloomington has been canceled, at least for the scheduled plan. Blacky Brown Festival has been canceled, City Pools. We're, we're, we're trying to understand what the options are for those as we go forward. No decisions made on that. I will add my thanks and recognition of this 50th anniversary of Earth Day, how important it is that we continue to do the good work and, and give the good energy toward that. I'll just, I'll just note, it can remind us that that can be quite effective. The first Earth Day in 1970, within three years of that first Earth Day, within three years, the following had happened. One, Environmental Protection Agency was created. Two, the Clean Water Act was passed. Three, the Clean Air Act was passed. And four, the Endangered Species Act was passed, within three years of the first Earth Day. Building momentum and building public support toward that is a good thing. It was very powerful then and we need to keep that kind of momentum. I am happy to take questions at the end of this. I'm going to hand it over, Councilmember Sims, if it's all right, for brief updates from the two coordinators of very important external work groups on social services and economic recovery and stabilization and recovery, Beverly Callender Anderson and Alex Crowley, if that's okay with you. And then maybe we all can take questions. Thank you.
It is fine with me and all of us who shall go first. I see Mr. Crowley.
At your direction.
Okay, let's start with Alex. How are you doing, Mr. Crowley? I'm sorry, Mr. Crowley.
Doing well, thanks very much, Councilmember Sims. So thanks to everybody for your comments and to Mary Hamilton for Dawn's very moving statement. I'm Alex Crowley, I'm the Director of Economic and Sustainable Development. I'm going to share my screen here so I can take you through a couple of slides of a presentation, give you an update on the work of the Economic Stabilization Recovery Working Group. Give me a second here. So can everybody see that okay?
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, in the interest of time, I'm going to kind of fly through this. You have a copy of it and, and it will be distributed. And so there will be some differences from the last presentation I gave, but we'll just get through this. but we'll just get through this, and then I'll be open to questions at the end. So I want to start by reiterating who the working group is and the tremendous work this group has done, including Patty East, Jane Cooper Smith, Brian Payne, Jen Pearl, Aaron Predmore, and Sean Starowitz. And I also want to add that Councilmember Scambolari and County Councilmember Kim have been very integral in this, and it's been hugely beneficial to us and to the work. They've really hung in there with us and provided great feedback along the way, so I wanted to draw your attention to their work and thank them for their participation and their knowledge along the way. So this is a chart that you've seen already. I updated it through today. What this is basically, in the light blue are the number of people who've gotten on the platform to start applications. The dark blue are the ones who have completed their applications. And then the yellow starts up in last week, actually last Thursday, are the ones that we've started to review. So you'll see those numbers here. Again, there's, you know, an uptick in activities, especially on the, we did it on the 20th and the 22nd, we took a look, and our presumption is that as the monies were starting to run out of the PPP program, which is the federal program, and SBA monies, people started to look elsewhere for potential sources of funding. So that's how we're interpreting those two numbers. This is a snapshot, which is sort of a different view of today, and basically it looks at everything, all the status levels of each of the applications as they come in. So what you'll see circled there is that we have awarded and wired and sent for wire seven awards. So those loans are wired. But each of these different statuses represent where people are in different areas. So under committee review means that those had been submitted after we started the first batch, so there are 14 of those. Another four came in actually after we even issued those 14, so there's an additional four in the queue, and we'll get those into review as quickly as possible. We awarded 14. There were, sorry, it's hidden in this camera view, but it's 122 pending submission. We've turned one down along the way because actually that entity was in the county. One entity, and I wanted to actually tip my hat to them, one organization was awarded a loan, and then sort of simultaneously had gotten funding from the federal government, and they came back to us and they appreciated having been awarded the loan, and they suggested that perhaps we could reuse that money for someone else. So I think that that was a very honorable thing to do and appreciate them doing that. And then, as I mentioned, we wired seven awards. And then there are eight who have been bumped into a side process, which is more of a kind of review. There was not enough information, so we're going back to them and trying to work them through to hopefully, yes, on the program. So as you'll see, total applications that have been approved, 22, for a total funding approval of $550,770, of which 449.6 come from the food and beverage tax, and 101.170 come from BUEA. Those have been funded, the seven I mentioned before, total $240,600, all of which has come from the food and beverage funding source. And the reason for that is we actually have two templates, and so we started with the food and beverage one, and the BUEA one is in real time, even as we speak, being approved and issued out. There's an additional, actually 72,000, maybe even a little more, that's in progress right now for wiring instructions, which just happened this afternoon. So just to reiterate, it's a pretty controlled process, and I want to make sure that everybody understands that. We're doing this by design, and you'll see here just a process overview. So the applicant starts and finishes an application. It goes into a financial and impact review committee, which has been stood up by the mayor as part of an executive order to appoint community members and leaders to look at that. We then take that, all of that input into our department, actually, and develop a recommendation. And in the case where we have conflict of interest flags, which we're taking very seriously in this case as well, we pursue those. And we also, we also, in the cases of the appeals process, kick those off to a manual process. Following that, we go to funding approval, which involves our department, which is Economic Sustainable Development, but the controller and legal departments are involved in that. Once that's done, there's a whole document creation and signature process, which we start and the applicant finishes, and then final approvals come back to the city, and the three departments review them, and then the controller kicks it out to the bank to issue the wires. So there have been some process improvements along the way, and this is important largely because we are concerned about making sure that this is smooth, and also are interested in making sure that if volumes increase, we've ironed out any issues that have happened along the way. We've added, at the suggestion of the reviewers themselves, some changes to the impact and financial review processes. Probably most important here is that on the financial review, we ask every new applicant to submit a credit report, which is a free credit report, and that really helps a lot to understand what kind of situation we're dealing with. So this is fiscally prudent, and we're really trying to make sure that we smooth out the process and ensure controls in the process. So there are continuing issues to address. You know, this is all moving very quickly, but we have an eye on the following. There's still a drop off between the applications in progress and those that have been submitted. We need to understand better what the status of the unfinished applications, that'll give us a sense of what kind of forward-looking volumes we should expect. There are continued challenges reaching underserved businesses via communications. We've done some outreach to try to shore that up, and we'll continue to do that, but that is something that we're keenly aware of. The CARES Act evolves every day, and so trying to keep track of that and make sure we understand the role that we're playing relative to that is an important consideration as we move forward. And then, just a challenge that we're facing is that the group that has submitted applications where there's more information needed is just very manually intensive. It must reside at the city because it's dealing with very sensitive information. But, you know, that's a process that, you know, we're going to have to work at a little bit more. So that's my presentation. I'm going to exit this, and hoping for questions when you're ready.
Beverly Callender Anderson.
Thank you. Yes, I'm trying to get to my screen. Sorry about that. Ms. Beverly Callender Anderson?
Thank you, Councilmember Sims. I'm Beverly Callender Anderson with the Community and Family Resources Department, and the Social Services Working Group is continuing to meet. I think I told you last week, or maybe the week before, that we're meeting in subgroups under the headings or the topics of shelter, food, health and public safety, and childcare. And so, all of those committees are led by members of that group and have been meeting to find out what the priorities in each one of those areas happen to be. We have gotten initial reports from three of the groups, from shelter, childcare, and food, continuing to work with the Public Safety Group to get their immediate priorities. Also, starting to look a bit into the future about what it's going to look like, so not so much looking for those that have, where we've dealt with some of the immediate needs, looking at what it's going to look like as we continue in the marathon, because we know that some of the results of this are going to be longer term than just the immediate. And we're moving from, I think now, from crisis to emergency. And so, we're looking at that, what that's going to mean for staffing, what that's going to mean for volunteers, what that's going to mean for supplies and equipment needs and all of that. The isolation shelter for people experiencing homelessness is up and running. Last week when I spoke with you, they'd had one guest. They've had two others since then. Actually, I think there is one there now. We have a group of us that meet daily just to get an update on the shelter, how many people are there, if there are any needs, and what's going on. And so, we have a morning meeting every day that involves the city and the county, and the shelter administrators and management, public health. I think that's it. So we are all aware of what's happening with and in the shelter, and if there are any needs, we're able to address them right away and not have to wait two or three days or weeks. And then we're also continuing to look at data from helping Bloomington Monroe, again, to see where our residents' priorities, priority needs are. And right now, the most of what we are seeing is food. That's one of the highest priority areas. So we're going to integrate that information with the information that we're getting from the agency director. So we're looking at it from an agency standpoint, as well as from an individual standpoint that way. So that's about what I have today, unless there are any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll now go to my council colleagues, and if anyone has any questions for Mayor Hamilton, or Mr. Crowley, or Ms. Callender Anderson, I need to see hands. Councilmember Scambolari.
Thank you. I have two questions for Mr. Crowley. First of all, what was the, of the loans that have been funded? What was the size range for those in dollars?
So the highest was $50,000, and the lowest, I believe, was, I'm going to have to call this up in one second. So... I'm off the network. I believe the lowest one was in the, was sub $10,000. So in the, and I'm doing that from memory, but I believe it was...
It's fun.
Yeah.
Four digits, somewhere in there.
Exactly, yeah.
Great, thank you. And a sec, whoops. And somebody needs to do something right now, whatever that is.
It's my turn.
And to follow up to a second question, one of the priorities we've talked about as a council from the very beginning is ensuring that we're reaching women and minority-owned businesses. Could you comment on that and how they are represented? Not just in those that we funded, but also among applicants too?
Yeah, so I alluded to this before. I think, so if you remember last week, I had some charts on that, and in the interest of time, I figured I'd sort of toggle between that and maybe some of the funding from week to week, so you could get a sense of both. There's just a limitation of time. We are, I think we're doing a much better job of reaching women than we are minority businesses, and we have reached out internally to various, to my colleagues at the city, and also to our partners in the community to see what we can do to amplify the messaging to communities that are harder to reach. So some effort has gone into that, and we need to double down on that effort. And so, we are getting some minority and other sort of underserved communities applying, which is encouraging. So the word is getting out, but it's not to the extent that I think we'd like to see right now, and so we have to do more work on that front.
And what are some of the ideas that you've all talked about for reaching that community?
Well, so, you know, I reached out to Beverly and CFRD, and, you know, they have various access points into communities via commissions that they have and some other groups that they interface with. And then, we and they have also reached out to the Chamber, who has access to certain groups that are, you know, businesses that are owned, black-owned business subgroups, and that sort of thing among their memberships, so we're trying to really lean into that as much as we can. And just generally, you know, trying to promote it. I think we need to do more on social media than we're doing, and then we have to just get a little bit more creative. I think we've been so, our hair's been on fire here trying to stand this program up, that a lot of attention's really spent on getting it going, but as it's going and starting to smooth out some of the issues that we've run into, hopefully we can spend more time really reaching out to those groups.
I can add to Alex's, what Alex said. We have worked with the Chamber. They have an African-American-owned business affinity group, and so they have communicated with that affinity group. And then the Commission on the Status of Black Males, our Commission on Hispanic and Latino Affairs, Commission on Status of Women have all shared with their groups as well. In addition, the Council on Community Accessibility has shared information with persons who are members of that group who may have physical or other kind of disabilities, that may be business owners. And so, we've tried to share that information as widely as possible, and I think the Chambers group is probably the largest group that we've worked with. But they have been connecting this African-American business owner affinity group for about the last year, and so they are a pretty stable and pretty connected group. So I know that they've gotten the information.
Great. Thank you both very much.
Thank you. Any further question of this group from councilmembers? Councilmember Smith.
Ms. Callender Anderson, thank you for the report, and I wondered who, you said hunger is one of the problems that really seems to be bubbling up. Who is hungry, and how do we get food to them in your mind?
I think what we're finding is that it's food supply. And so, I couldn't tell you specifically who's hungry, you know, which families there are, but I do know that keeping the food bank stocked full enough so that they've got supplies for more than two weeks at a time is an issue. And then, you know, as you know, the food bank then feeds into a lot of the other agencies, like a Community Kitchen, Mother Hubbard's Cupboard, our Faith Community Pantries. I mean, the food banks is that hub that helps to feed into them. And so, what we sort of found from helping Bloomington Monroe, I mean, are just people that are seeking food. I mean, they're looking for where to get food, and so it doesn't really tell you how big the family is, or the age, or anything. It just sort of, it tells you where, what it is that they came to the platform to find. But on the other, on the other side, on the agency side of that, it's really just trying to keep that food supply from getting low and making sure that there is enough to carry us through, especially to the summer, and that's what we're looking at now. And then the other thing that we're hearing is that there are particular types of foods that seem to be in short supply. For instance, the Community Kitchen went from serving, you know, in a dining room style, to sending things carry out, and so they were looking for things that were very portable, like fruit cups or tuna or whatever like that, and that seems to be difficult to find. And so, from their regular vendors, and so they're having to purchase from other people. And so, just finding those kinds of staples, you know, to have stocked in their kitchens.
Right. So what would all of us, what would be the best thing that we could do, you know, as citizens and the public, to help the food bank out?
Well, I can't speak on behalf of all of them, because I don't, you know. But, I mean, you know, food drives, just having those staples there. I think, you know, the food bank is probably going to be seeking funding so that they can purchase items, and I would suspect the same from some of the other agencies, that that would be helpful to them. But we can, actually, the white papers that we've done talk about specific dollar amounts that are going to be needed to keep places like the food bank in food for more than two weeks at a time, and that's some information that I can share with you, with the council.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, but as far as the public is concerned, you know, that food drives and things like that would be good if you can do it in a safe way with social distancing.
It also sounds like one of the great things would be just to donate some money to your local food bank, whichever one you...
Whichever, yeah, whichever one you do.
That, yeah, that you see fit. So thank you very much.
No, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pete Mount Smith.
Yes, I just wanted to follow up on Councilmember Smith's question, or rather, Ms. Callender Anderson's response. So is, are the, is the food bank having trouble getting food? I mean, do they have enough money, but they're just having trouble finding places to spend that money on food? Or is it, is it more of a local supply issue?
So at the time, I think food banks nationwide are seeing an increase in need. And so, what has happened is that has, that slowed down some of the delivery, and so they're having to purchase from other places rather than their normal supply chain just to have food there. So it's not necessarily that they don't have the money they need right at the moment, but we're also looking out and projecting too, based on the increased need. But, but some of it is supply chain, some of it is availability of, of the type of food that they need. And some of it is just being prepared for the increase because there has been an increase in need all the way around. There are families that are visiting Mother Hubbard's or Community Kitchen that have never, you know, been to a food provider before. And so we're seeing that increase in need, which of course then puts more pressure on each one of those agencies to make sure they've got the food. And if you're, if you're stocked up for two weeks for a particular number and that number increases, then that means you're using that food quicker than you would normally. So, and needing to get more supplies in. So they're having to go to alternative sources for food. Does that answer your question? I'm sorry.
Yeah, so it sounds like it's, it's both, both things are problematic, both higher up in the supply chain, getting, you know, wholesalers to find, finding new wholesalers to buy the food.
Right.
And then also just being able to help families here locally.
And just dealing with the increased need.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions from council members? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Mayor Hamilton, Mr. Crowley and Ms. Beverly, or Ms. Callender Anderson. Really appreciate seeing you tonight and thank you so much for the reports.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Now we'll move to any council committees. Do we have any council committee reports this evening? Okay, seeing none. Next item on the agenda is appointments to boards and commissions. Do we have any such?
Yes, Mr. Vice President.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Sandberg.
Thank you. We would like to recommend the reappointment of Tracy Gates to the parking commission.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second. And as we do on virtual meetings, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Scambolary?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Pete Mount Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. That passes nine, I'm sorry, eight zero, or adopted eight zero. Councilmember Sandberg, do we have any further?
Not from Team C.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Smith?
President Sims, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mary Morgan to the Bloomington Urban Enterprise Association, seat C3, Zone Resident 1.
Okay, need a second.
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 Thank you. It's been properly moved in second. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Pete Mount Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambolary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that is adopted eight zero. Do we have any other appointments to boards or commissions this evening? Okay, seeing none, thank you. Next item on the agenda is legislation for second reading and resolutions. Councilmember Pete Mount Smith?
Yes, Mr. Vice President, I move that ordinance 2009 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second. Would the clerk please read?
Do we need a vote on this motion?
I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. You're absolutely correct. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll to vote on this motion?
Yes. Councilmember Sims?
Yes.
Pete Mount Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambolary?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries eight zero. Now, Madam Clerk, will you please read?
Yes, ordinance 2009 to amend Title II of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Administration and Personnel and to grant authority to act in accordance with declared disaster emergencies regarding amending 22203O entitled employee policies complying with State of Indiana's Declaration of Disaster Emergency under Indiana Code 1014312. The synopsis is as follows. Ordinance 2009 addresses the operation of city government during the public health emergency resulting from COVID-19. It amends employee policies to allow the mayor to order some or all employees of the city of Bloomington to continue to receive pay during their regularly scheduled non-overtime work hours for the duration of an emergency declared by the governor under Indiana Code 1014312. Then, for the duration of this emergency, it invokes Indiana Code 1014317J, which in part allows political subdivisions to waive procedures and formalities in regard to certain of its functions and gives the mayor the authority to implement those measures as long as those actions are consistent with that statute, the governor's executive orders or any other applicable law, declaration, order or decree. Also, for the duration of this disaster emergency and to the extent consistent with guidance from the State Board of Accounts, it authorizes the controller to approve the payment of all necessary city expenditures and defers the action of the boards and commissions which normally review and approve those, these expenditures until after the emergency and alters their role at that time to the review and approval of the controller's actions. Your Committee of the Whole recommendation on April 15th was due pass 900.
Mr. Vice President, I move that ordinance 2009 be adopted.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Council, council parliamentarian, how would we introduce the amendments?
Well, shall we, should we have an overview of the ordinance again first or?
Well, yes, we do. I'm sorry, go ahead and proceed. And then we'll talk about as amended. So, no, you're absolutely correct. So I believe it's been properly moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
No, we have Ms. Guthrie, I think, to present.
As the presenter for this ordinance. Okay, I see you down there. I'm sorry. Ms. Guthrie?
Hi, good evening.
Thanks, Isabel.
The synopsis is pretty clear, the intent behind this, while it was prompted by the State Board of Accounts primarily, but also the governor's executive order, the stay-at-home order 2008. And the intent of this ordinance is to provide the city with flexibility to occasionally and judiciously waive procedures and processes that we normally follow in the event we need to respond to some element of this emergency situation more speedily than our processes and procedures would permit normally. And the first provision is to, actually, that one is an amendment of our existing Bloomington Municipal Code regarding employment of our personnel. And that would allow us, in the event we needed to, to address this particular emergency, to send employees home with pay as long as they were available and working as much as they could from home during their regular work hours. The second provision is designed to allow the administration the ability to be flexible and nimble and to waive procedures as necessary to accomplish certain actions to respond to the crisis. And again, that is in compliance with state law, which, under a declared emergency, this is IC 10143-17J5, to waive procedures and even laws in order to respond as necessary. And the third provision is to permit the controller to make expenditures under the same kinds of circumstances where speed is required. And the effect, this is in direct response to the State Board of Accounts memos, and there were three of them, wherein they suggested that the local government unit, particularly the legislative body, adopt a policy that allows this kind of flexibility for the controller. And if there is a policy, then when the SBOA comes to audit, they will not issue an audit exception to anything that didn't follow our normal procedures, which is what they would normally do. So that's, that is the summary of the ordinance and I'm happy to answer questions. And Controller Jeff Underwood is here as well.
Hey, thank you. Did Controller Underwood care to present at all or just be available for questions?
Just available for questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from council members? Councilmember Scambolary?
Thank you. Ms. Guthrie, one of the things we talked about when we did first reading last week is that rightly, you know, you said, you observed that we can't know what kinds of things might come up necessarily because it is a crisis and emergency. I know it's only a week later. If there are anything we've learned in that week would add on, you know, to what you commented on last week, last time.
Well, I'll rely on Jeff to answer that as well, but I am not, because there are so many moving parts and I'm not always aware of all of them. But one of the examples that I cited last week, which is still, I think, a kind of iconic example, if you will, was signing a contract for hotel space for our emergency responders in about five days without sending it to a board. And in fact, it's not possible to get it to the Public Safety Board until, well, it's not set yet, but they have to have a special session. So I don't know if Jeff, are you aware of any other things? I mean, it hasn't come up all that often.
We had one today, we had one today that was a community foundation grant that we, that the community foundation fast-tracked in the Parks Department and I fast-tracked as well to provide a couple of locations for, to create pods for childcare. So normally that would take, we wouldn't take that back through the, we would have taken it to the Parks Board for approval, but we're going to go ahead and get that signed and ready to go so that we can start housing those people right away.
So I thought, so you're hearing, most of what we're seeing is the process of getting a contract through and approved by a board before it's signed.
That's helpful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further questions from council members? Okay, just following up with parliamentarian, do we now go to the public or do we consider further paperwork or further amendments?
I would say we would go to amendments now and then the public can comment on the amendments individually.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we have ordinance 2009 amendment one, and we have a total of three this evening, I do believe. And the sponsor of this, of all three, but of this first one is Councilmember Flaherty.
Yes, and point of order, do we motion to adopt the amendment to start the discussion?
Yes.
So I move we adopt amendment one to ordinance 2009.
Second.
Thank you. Adopt, adoption ordinance number one of 2009 has been properly moved in second. Ms. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
We would have a presentation. I believe we would have the presentation then from the sponsor and then go to the administration and then questions and then the public and then we would vote on the amendment.
Ten four. Thank you. Steve, come back, come on. Okay, go ahead, Matt.
Yeah, so this amendment is pretty simple. As the synopsis lays out, it's really just to clarify what the administration has confirmed their intent of the different sections is, there was just a little bit of ambiguity in the initial discussions. Whereas section one of the ordinance applies indefinitely because it's a change to city code to apply to any future declared emergency. Sections two and three, by contrast, are only meant to apply during this current COVID-19 related state emergency. So it adds a little bit of language specifying that it is this COVID-19 emergency, including, I believe, current declared emergency, as you can see it in the parenthetical there in section two, that then becomes referenced later in section three. So pretty minor change, clarifying that those two sections are only applying for the current emergency and not in case of future emergencies. I'm happy to answer any questions. Yeah, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Any council members have any questions for Councilmember Flaherty?
Yeah.
Councilmember Pete Mount Smith?
I just wanted to check in with Ms. Guthrie to see what the administration's response is.
We are fine with that amendment.
Thank you. Have any more questions from council or any questions at all? Okay, parliamentarian, do we adjudicate this or move on to the second amendment?
We would now go to public comment on this amendment.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Lucas, do we have any one in the public?
No one has chimed in yet, but you might want to give folks just a couple of seconds to either use the chat function in Zoom to let us know if you'd like to make a comment on amendment one, or you can use the raise hand function. Either one will let us know that you'd like to, to make a comment. And I'm not seeing anyone, but you might want to give it just a few more seconds. No takers.
Okay. Ms. Parliamentarians, it's comment time now for council members.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any comments from any council colleagues on this amendment, amendment number one of ordinance 20-09?
Call the question on amendment one.
Second.
Before we move forward, Councilmember Pete Mount Smith?
Yes, I just wanted to thank Councilmember Flaherty for bringing this forward. When I initially read the legislation, I had the exact same question. Does it apply to just this emergency or any declared emergency? So I'm glad we got clarification on that through this amendment.
Thank you. The question has been called and has been second. Will the clerk please call the roll? I'm sorry, the vote for this amendment?
Yes. Let's see, so for amendment one, Councilmember Pete Mount Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambolary?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
And Sims?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Flaherty, would you care to introduce amendment two?
Yeah, I move that amendment two to ordinance 2009 be adopted.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. It properly moved to second. Can you present?
Yes, so a little more going on here, but the synopsis, I think, does a good job summarizing that the intent here is to make sure we're aligning with the guidance from the State Board of Accounts as well as just being as clear as possible in the procedures that should be used. The whereas clause that is proposed to be added. And let me also, at this moment, thank Council Attorney Sherman for his help in drafting this. And, and I just want to emphasize with And I just want to emphasize within the whereas clause, which quotes from the State Board of Accounts memos to provide some additional context for anyone looking at this ordinance, that our policies and actions, the goal should be to maintain operations of government as normal or as near to normal as possible, while maintaining the well-being of governmental employees and the public. So that's really the goal here. So the other change is that in the Section 2 of the ordinance, it adds a final sentence specifying that when the mayor exercises authority under Indiana Code 10-14-3-17J, that it be done after determination that it is not practicable to use our normal or near-normal policies. In that event, if that determination is made, that the mayor or his designee must then inform the council within a reasonable time period of that decision, or of that action, rather, in writing of the, the change from, from normal procedures. So the goal is really to, again, stick to State Board of Accounts guidance as close as possible. Make sure we're, have procedures and guidance in place to ensure that this is not used broadly, but really only when necessary. And let's see, really, I think, for council as the legislative and fiscal body as well, just to make sure that we're giving, while we're designating authority here, that we continue to maintain appropriate oversight and accountability through reporting. And I appreciate the feedback from Ms. Guthrie that Mr. Sherman got earlier today. And I think, I think we're in a spot where the administration's comfortable with this as well. But I'm happy to answer any questions and hear from staff as well. So I'll close with that. Thanks.
Staff, any comments?
We are okay with this amendment.
Are okay with this amendment. Thank you very much. Now it's time to, Mr. Lucas, do we have any pub, or comments from the public?
Council questions would be next, please.
Okay, we've got these amendments. Keep trying to keep them on. Thank you very much.
As that's, as that's taking place, though, if any members of the public do want to comment on this, it might be a good idea to send a message via chat now to get lined up if there are any comments.
Thank you. Now, do we have any comments from council members on Amendment 2 of ordinance 20-09? Okay. Seeing none, I think we're ready for public comments. Mr. Lucas, do we have any takers yet?
No. No takers.
And, and we'll give it a few more sec, minutes or seconds, but I would also, are they also able to use the hand or the hand function?
Raise hand function, yes.
As well as the chat function, yes.
And I'll go ahead and just let folks know, if you want to make a comment on the ordinance as a whole, now would be a good time to let me know that, too. I'll take a note of anybody that wants to make a comment. And that way we can move smoothly through, through comments. No takers on Amendment 2, though.
Okay, thank you. Now returning to council, do we have any further council comments? Councilmember Pete Mount Smith?
Yes, again, I'd like to thank Councilmember Flaherty and Mr. Sherman and Ms. Guthrie for wading through some of these legal references to Indiana Code and the memos of the State Board of Accounts. And it's very detail-oriented work, which I'm always one to appreciate. And I think that, you know, our, well, let me just speak for myself and not others. You know, when this first, this ordinance came forward, my initial reaction was, oh, yeah, we definitely need to give the administration flexibility because this is an emergency situation. A lot of people in the community are suffering. If we can act quickly to alleviate any of that suffering, that's, that's only good. But I think it is very smart to tread carefully, to be very picky in our choice of words, and particular in exactly the details of what the ordinance says. Not because we distrust anybody involved, but just because it is our duty to have an oversight capacity, especially on budgetary issues, but also, you know, on other issues that may be waived in an emergency. So I appreciate Councilmember Flaherty and Councilmember Rosenbarger upcoming for digging into this in more detail. I think it, it makes it a better ordinance overall. And it does not in any way mean that we think that Ms. Guthrie or anybody else is going to do something crazy.
Okay, thank you. And I'll have a comment, and I'll piggyback on that. I think there was, at our discussion last week, maybe someone thought that maybe there was a distrust issue or an overreaching issue. But I think it's an accountability issue. I'm glad to hear that staff is okay with this and that there will be reporting should we need to veer from the norm. So I also want to thank Councilmember Flaherty as well. Okay, that's council comments. Do we have any final comments from council colleagues?
Call the question.
Second.
Thank you. Question's been called and seconded. Clerk voted.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambolary?
Yeah.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Sims?
Yes.
Pete Mount Smith?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, and that is adopted, that Amendment 8-0. Okay, now moving to Amendment 3 of ordinance 20-09. Councilmember Flaherty? I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It's fine. Go ahead. I'll present this, yeah. Vice President, I, can you hear me? Yeah, it's okay. I motion to adopt Amendment 3 of ordinance 2009. Is that what I did?
Okay, thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Can you please present?
Yes, okay, so this amendment is in response to Section 3 of the ordinance that allows the controller to authorize expenditures in advance of normal review and approval by council boards and commissions and/or really. And so this amendment just limits and just makes clear that the expenditures need to directly address the current declared emergency instead of anything that might just be ordinary business, so it's directly addressing the emergency. And then only when the regular process is not practical due to the current declared emergency. So it also recognizes that council in 2018 created the Oversight Ordinance in the Bloomington Municipal Code. That is 2.26.200 through 210. And in that ordinance, I'm just going to pull it up really quickly. That is where we talk about the normal procedure for things, but then 2.26.20 addresses where that, when that procedure can't happen. And so it lays out a process as well. So this amendment is saying that this ordinance will work in conjunction with this provision of Bloomington Code. Sorry, I passed it. And in the code, it really just talks about when there is an emergency and the controller needs to do this, it would be at a time where the failure to transfer or expend funds would cause an underlying transaction not to proceed, which in turn would cause an immediate danger to the health, safety, and welfare or loss to the city. So kudos to those of you on the council in 2018. You already sort of planned for this in an ordinance. And so we're just reminding an amendment by Amendment 3 that this exists.
Thank you.
And
go ahead.
I just wanted to chime in. I'm co-sponsoring this amendment, and I was a co-sponsor of ordinance 1810, where we did the initial kind of additional oversight of expenditures. So I don't have anything else to add, and I thank Councilmember Rosenbarger for the initiative.
Thank you. Staff, how does staff feel about this?
We're fine with it.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll go to council questions. Do we have any council members that have questions for the sponsor and co-sponsor, Councilmember Rosenbarger or Councilmember Pete Mount Smith on Amendment 3 of ordinance 20-09? Okay, seeing none? Then we will go to the public. Mr. Lucas, do we have any takers?
No one has lined up.
Okay, and during this process, we will again mention that you can access or offer comments through chat, or you can use the raise hand function at the bottom of our Zoom screen.
No takers.
No takers. Thank you. Okay, we're seeing none here. Do we have any final council comments? Okay.
Call the question.
Councilmember Smith, I'm sorry.
Oh, I just briefly wanted to say that on my short time on the council, I, I'm really, it's really great to see that this is, I think this is the way the process should work, and it refines the ordinances, and it works together with other staff to make a better ordinance. So I'm thankful for everybody involved, and I'll be supporting it. So thank you.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Question's been called and been seconded. For Amendment 3-2009. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambolary?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Sims?
Yes.
Pete Mount Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and that was adopted 8-0 as well. And we now have ordinance 20-09 as amended. Council parliamentarian.
Are there any final questions from council?
Council, I thought I just asked that. I'm sorry. Do you have any, I'm sorry, any final questions from council on ordinance 20-09 as amended? Okay, seeing none.
Public comment.
How are we?
And I will chime in that no one has lined up yet for any public comment on the ordinance as amended, but you might want to give them a few more seconds as this is the entire ordinance.
Oh, we will, and thank you, council parliamentarian. Now, we'll give them more time and give folks enough time to think about it and see if they want to contact us. And again, I will remind them, you could either use the chat function or the hand raise function at the bottom of the Zoom page.
No takers.
Okay, seeing none. Okay. Is this final comment, Miss Parliamentarian? Okay, do we have any final comments from council members on ordinance 20-09 as amended? Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes, I just wanted to thank, again, Councilmembers Rosenbarger, as well as Council Attorney Sherman for working with us on this, as well as Ms. Guthrie and Mr. Underwood. As I stated last week and will reiterate now, like, I very much support the intent of the amendment and all the goals that the administration has laid out. I just thought that it could benefit from a little more clarity on the reporting and oversight as a responsibility of, of the council. But I very much support the administration having flexibility and the ability to be nimble in responding to, to the emergency, and the intent with amendments was not to restrict their actions at all. So just wanted to reiterate that and thank those who worked on the amendments. And yeah, I'll be supporting the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further? Councilmember Pete Mount Smith?
Yes, I just wanted to thank the mayor's administration, the department heads, Ms. Guthrie and Mr. Underwood and others. As we heard earlier this evening, Alex Crowley say that they've been running around with their hair on fire. It has, I know, have been very, very challenging trying to deal with all of the fallout from the pandemic and the economic downturn. So I just really appreciate everybody, you know, giving 110%. And I know you've been working very, very long hours, and I just wanted to say sincerely, thank you.
Hey, thank you very much. And I will make a final comment as well. I am elated that we've discussed the nimbleness and the flexibility for staff in order to, to be able to move quickly as we move along this pandemic, along this emergency. But I also think it's equally important, in particular from this body, that there is a mechanism for accountability that is palatable for all involved. So thank you again for the hard work and all the input we've gotten from everyone. Okay, any more final comments from council?
Call the question.
Second. Okay, the question has been called and seconded. Okay, will the clerk please read? I'm sorry, please take the roll. I'm sorry, please take the roll.
Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Scambolary?
Yeah.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Sims?
Yes.
Pete Mount Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
And Smith?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you all again. It's ordinance 20-09 as amended has been adopted 9-0. Thank you all very, very much. There are no legislation for first readings this evening. We'll move to council schedule, and that'll be Mr. Lucas or, Mr. Lucas? Okay.
Yeah, just a few things I wanted to bring to the council's attention. The first is we've got a work session scheduled for this Friday at 12 noon. Obviously, if that work session goes forward, it will be held remotely. But I wanted to get a sense of how many folks might be able to attend that work session to see if we still need to have it. The only item that would be ready for discussion is appropriation ordinance 2002. That's an appropriation ordinance you'll see in the coming weeks. That has to do with a local match for a project on Sare Road. And if the council is ready tonight, we might also want to figure out the, the meeting dates for that particular appropriation ordinance. And normally that scheduling responsibility falls to the council president. But given the public health emergency and the odd procedures we've been following, we wanted to give staff a sense of what dates the council might want to take that up so that they could publish the required notice 10 days in advance of the final hearing date. So I guess first I'll ask if, if anyone's interested in a work session on that item this Friday. And a show of hands of how many might be able to attend would be good. I see five, so it looks like that work session will go forward. And if we're not ready tonight to figure out what dates, the council will, will hear that and whether it'll go to a committee, the whole standing committee or no committee. We could also talk about that on, on Friday at the work session. So I'm getting at least one nod that that might be preferred.
I don't know if this is comment time or not, but I think those that'll be there Friday is probably best to discuss that then. And Mr. Volan may be available as well. I'm not so sure, but I think Friday would be better.
That's, that's perfectly fine. Just wanted to bring that up as an issue. So the next item is item is a reminder that next week on Wednesday at our normal 6:30 time, we've got a budget advance meeting scheduled. That's a meeting that appears on the council's annual schedule that happens every year. It's an opportunity for the council to hear from the administration, from the controller's office, from the mayor's office about the budget and a chance to get together to talk about priorities. This year, it's obviously going to be a little under unusual circumstances. I expect we'll have that meeting remotely. And, you know, under the given, under the constraints we're all under with the public health emergency, that might impact budget discussions. Just wanted to remind you that that meeting's going to happen and ask if the council wanted to schedule a special session immediately before that budget advance meeting for the purpose of making any further appointments to boards and commissions. I know the work of filling those vacancies has sort of been put on hold, given that we had to move to remote working situations, but a lot of those vacancies have been sitting and need to be filled. And I understand that some of the interview committee teams have been meeting and may be meeting next week. So if the council wanted to schedule a special session just for that purpose, it could do so now. And then the budgets budget advance meeting would would immediately follow that special session.
Councilmember Pete Mount Smith?
I move that we hold a special session on Wednesday, April 29th at 6:30 to be followed by the budget advance.
Second.
Okay, spin properly moved in second. Before we go further, do we have to mention the purpose of that meeting, or was that part of what you just told us, Mr. Lucas?
The council president or the vice president acting acting under his authority can approve the agenda for that meeting. I think given my my explanation, everybody understands that's the purpose.
Okay, thank you. It's been properly moved in second to schedule a special session for next Wednesday evening at 6:30, immediately followed by the budget advance meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll? You're muted.
There you go. I saw that. Let me try that again. Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yeah.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Sims?
Yes.
Pete Mount Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
And Sandberg?
Yes.
All right. Thank you all. And that has passed nine, I'm sorry, eight zero. And we'll be talking about scheduling scheduling for next week. Before we move to the next item, I just do want to say thank everyone for your patience, kind of a little bit rambling. I know it's a small agenda. We had a little bit to do, but more practice is going to be fun from my end. So thank you all for your assistance, and particularly our our parliamentarian. Thank you so very much, Mr. Lucas. Okay, next on the agenda is adjournment. I will accept a motion to do so.
Move that we adjourn.
Second.
Second. Spin moved in second. Clerk, do we need to take a roll for that?
Technically, yes.
Technically, yes. Will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Scambalory?
Yeah.
Rosenbarger?
Yeah.
Sims?
Yes.
Pete Mount Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
And Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you. It was adopted eight zero. Everyone have a great evening and public you as well. Thank you all.
Thank you.